Kevin, welcome. Okay, we have an awesome presentation this evening. Thank you guys for being here. I'm addressing goal two of our strategic plan. So I'm not sure who wants to kick it off, but.
I'm gonna kick us off. So one of the privileges that I get, and one of the things I love about this district is I did work with a variety of teams. One of the many privileges I have is getting to work with this team. We call ourselves MTSSB Team, Multi Tiered Systems of Support Behavior. Sometimes Goal Two, Four, for short, those are the two goals in the strategic plan that we focus on. So I am joined by Josh Ike Paulson, Director of Equity, Sarah O'Donnell, Executive Director of Student Services, and the Executive Lead for Goal Two, and then Sherri Simpson, our Director of Behavior and Mental Health Support. And so, we're gonna be talking about emotional safety. But specifically, within that goal to an emotional safety, we really want to focus on the behavior of attendance, because we recognize the cyclical relationship that attendance has with feelings of emotional safety. If you're not feeling emotionally safe, you may not attend. You fall behind, you get anxious, you don't want to come back, you come back, you feel unprepared. It's to further feelings of emotional unsafiness. And so we just have this vicious cycle. And so what we found, we're gonna talk about tonight, is how attendance really is a strategy that can cut across all areas. So as we think about emotional safety, you see this, it really does. That's not just a purview of just Goal Two or Goal Four. Good instruction in early years, in the transition grades, through graduation. That thread of emotional safety is so important. And like everything we do, it's really rooted in our promise. Because if you can know, value, and support every student, right, there's more likely they're gonna attend. And we're gonna spend a lot of time talking about attendance tonight specifically, but in a larger sense, just what behavior looks like. I mean, that behavior and how that impacts. And really want to talk to you about one of the comments you made at all about, what are we doing to make sure that we are reaching those kids that feel most disconnected? And our tier one strategies for attendance do just that. So with that, I'll turn it over to Sarah.
Well, good evening. I'm so happy to be here this evening. We really have done some significant work just in the last few months regarding attendance, and it's paying off. But we have lots, lots of things still to do. But just as a reminder with Goal Two, nurtured, engaged, empowered students. We talk about every student being attending school regularly in that supportive and challenging learning environment, where they're empowered to exercise an active voice in their own growth. And if you really focus on this word attendance, if kids aren't attending, they can't access that challenging learning environment. They can't exercise their active voice. And so when you look at really the foundation, if kids aren't in school, they don't learn. If kids aren't in school, they don't feel safe necessarily. And so if there is an attendance concern of some sort, what are we doing to intervene and support children, no matter who they are, whatever the barriers are. So this evening, we're looking forward to sharing with you kind of the work that we've done so far, the tiered system that we have in place, where we're working and where we need to grow still. So that's kind of our purpose tonight. So when we look at more specifically at Goal Two, the nurtured, engaged, and empowered student, when you take a look at the potential measurements, letter A says the increased attendance and decreased chronic absenteeism rates. That is our area that we're focusing on, is how are we increasing attendance, making sure that attendance is the best that it can be for each child, while also addressing chronic absenteeism. And we are going to define for you a little bit later, what's that difference between chronic absenteeism and truancy? Because there's definitely a relationship. But no matter the reason for attendance concerns, what are we doing to support, really identify what are those barriers to having good attendance? And if you think about it, letter A, you can't get to letter B and C in terms of positive perceptions of school, in terms of safety, academic support, as well as accessing the emotional behavior of mental health and physical health supports unless you're there. So again, A is the foundation of this school. Kids aren't there, they don't learn, they don't access the resources that they need. Oh. What did I do? Did I?
That's okay.
There we go.
There you go.
Awesome.
So as you all aware, I stated in our strategic plan, we know that equity is the red thread that that combines and that weaves through all the goals. And so when we look at Goal Two specifically, attendance, we know that is important to understand and really research and dive into, you know, who are, who's actually being affected by these chronic absenteeism, who's being left behind, who's not feeling safe, or who's in this vicious cycle. So one of the things that we also try and look at and dive into is different groups of students as to see different patterns, whether it's racial, ethnic, or by programs, so.
Relationship to policy. We have a number of board policies related to this that really talk about student improvement, attendance replacement, enrollment, compulsory attendance, and so forth. So those guide a lot of our procedures. So our outcomes for this evening. Big picture, we want to understand the connection, want to help you understand the connection between attendance and achievement and graduation. We want to help you understand how we're supporting strong school attendance through our tiered system of support, as well as understand how we're addressing chronic absenteeism through our tiered systems of support as well. And so I do want to and so our work this year is identifying the needs to support these systems. And we've done a lot of work identifying those these, and we've got some great strengths happening. We're also working. We've got a number of things that we prioritized for this year, but that's kind of what we're gonna go into this evening. So here's your entry task. Just think for a moment. Think about your own experience in school. What influenced your attendance? And if you've got an idea, what influenced your attendance?
Lori has one.
I do not.
You guys are those students.
Yeah, it was, it was my friends.
Yes, the social.
The social part of it, yeah. And my parents, right?
Expectation.
Exactly. It wasn't an option to not to go to school.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, same with me. It wasn't an option. So I mean, the friends at school were nice, but I don't think my parents cared if I had friends at school or not. It was still an expectation.
Expectation, yeah, yeah. What else?
Yeah, same.
Yeah.
It was just the way it was.
Yeah. I remember back to my time. I grew up in Yakima. And for me, it was that sense of belonging. I was part of the music programs, I was part of athletics. And so that sense of belonging is what what drove my attendance in many ways. And so think about our students now, answering that question. What influences their attendance? And it could be positive, it could be expectations, right? It could be a sense of belonging. The flip side is, what influences attendance maybe negatively as well? There are outside elements that can impact poor attendance as well. And so part of our work is addressing or identifying what are those barriers to strong attendance. And we're gonna do some, an activity at the very end of our presentation to help you understand how we identify what those barriers are. Okay, so we have two terms that we want to make sure you walk away knowing or understanding this evening. And so we have the term chronic absenteeism, and we have the term truancy. And if, so on the left, chronic absenteeism, basically it it includes all absences, whether unexcused, excused, and it also includes suspensions, because that is an absence from school. It's based on percentage, 10% of the school year. And we're gonna talk about what 10% means in just a couple of slides. Josh is just gonna share with you what 10% means, because that's an important number for us to remember. It focuses on all the reasons for missing school. Truancy, on the other hand, I think we have a good understanding of that. We've heard that term for many years. Includes only those unexcused absences. It's based on fixed numbers of unexcused absences. And it's possible that there might be legal action if things are really, really concerning, right? The interesting thing is that with our Venn diagram, look at the similarities though. They both involve concerns about school attendance. Both can lead to interventions aimed at improving attendance, and both affect a student's ability to succeed academically. And so when we talk about kids that are at risk, at risk of not, not feeling like they fit in, or not feeling safe at school, we need to notice when kids are absent, no matter the reason, and really understand what are your reasons for not being at school, and how can we address those? It might be academics, it might be harassment, intimidation, bullying. So we need to really ask questions. So first of all, we need to notice, and then we need to ask questions, you know, what's going on here?
So you guys might be wondering why this is like the topic now. It's not a summer bonding lake school district issue, this is a national thing. So chronic absenteeism, it's doubled since the pandemic. If you notice on this graph, this is just Washington State data, but you'll notice 2019, 2020, it was really low. It's because the second half of the school year, people didn't need to take attendance and turn in attendance. And that's why, like for our state, that looks really low as far as it dipped there. But then you notice remote learning was that 2021, and then that first year coming back from COVID, you see that it was really high, probably due to things like, you know, you had to be gone for two weeks, if you had close contact, that type of thing. But you see the next year, when those restrictions went away, the issue with chronic absenteeism did not just go away. On here, you can see this is, the graph shows what students' attendance was in their, so if you're looking at the bottom, that's showing you how truant they, or not truant, how chronically absent they were in their kindergarten year. And then the bars represent where their reading levels were based on that. So if you look, you can see if they were hardly ever absent, but zero to three percent in their kindergarten year, they had higher reading scores. Versus if they were absent more than 10% of the school year, their reading scores, their math scores, their general knowledge all went down. When I look at this, I think of the kiddo that yes, they were absent during their kindergarten year, and then they were absent their first grade year, and then they had absences their second grade year, and just that gap is getting bigger and bigger and bigger. And so everyone becomes passionate about things that they feel like they're excelling in. And so that desire to be in school, it kind of starts this cycle. So then you can see this graph, it represents kind of that data around the bottom, it's showing you how much did they attend in their eighth grade year. So like 90 to 100% attendance, if you notice, that was an indicator of them passing ninth grade. So eighth grade attendance predicts the next year. So you notice that if they were absent more than 80% in their eighth grade year, in ninth grade, students, they were not passing their classes, ninth grade.
So a lot of this is right, five hundred two per doc. But, and with that, I want to get local, because I really want to see the impact of this. So we looked at our last year's graduation, and we went back to the earliest high school data we had for that cohort. The earliest high school attendance data we had for last year's graduates was actually their sophomore year, because their freshman year was the pandemic, and we didn't have accurate attendance that was meaningful because of the pandemic. So when you look across the district, that year, their sophomore year, 21, 22, coming back from pandemic, we had 43.2% of students across the district that were chronically absent, missed more than 10% of the school year. So you see that, right, that 56% were non-chronic. Now let's go to the next slide, where we look at just the students who didn't graduate last year. So when we look at those students, and so of the 71 students who didn't graduate, that won't retain because of their IEP, we backed up the kids who retained through their IEP, they go into their transitions program, they continue with their DLC, we backed those kids out. We have 71 students who didn't graduate. Of the 55 that we have data for from their sophomore year, that's what it looks like. 91% of them were chronically absent their sophomore year. Right? And that's so powerful when you look at that. So we know, now, again, some is chicken and egg, right? Am I doing poorly because I'm not attending, or am I not attending because I'm doing poorly? And so, but that's why there's static, when we look at the barriers to attendance, that's one of the things we're gonna look at. But we really wanted to make this vocal. I really appreciated, you know, looking at the statewide data, but when you look at that, that's just so powerful. You see what is, how stark that is in that difference. And I'll tell you, I was pretty surprised by that, just how severe that number was.
All right. So in these next couple of slides, I'm gonna talk, we're gonna be talking about, you know, when do absences actually become a problem? You've been, Sarah alluded to it, as well as some of the research behind it, and we keep talking about 10%, 10% meaning that the students is 10% absentee more, right? That's when it becomes a problem. What that means is that that's 18 or more days based off of 180-day school year. But when you think about it, you're like, oh, you know, when you break down that number, what, what breaks down to is basically two or more days a month, right? Which is essentially 18 days, which is almost a month of school. And when you look at like December, for example, in December, we only have 15 days of school, right? And then January, February, both of those a month, we only have 18 days of school. And then in the month of April, we have 17 days of school. So essentially, these students are losing, you know, 18, a month of instructional instructional work, right, and learn. And then so when we take a look at the early grades, and I appreciated the slide that Sherri had when we looked at that kindergarten piece, right? And again, you know, categorize it D four, duh. But missing 10% about two days each month over the course of a school year can make it harder for students to learn and read, right? Students can still fall behind if they miss just one or two days every few weeks. Even being late to school can lead to poor attendance. Absences and tardies can affect the whole classroom if the teacher has to slow down, learn to help students catch up, and chronic absenteeism in kindergarten can predict lower test scores, poor attendance and retention, or intervention supports needed in later grades. So when we see students in kindergarten level, preschool level with chronic absenteeism, we can predict that we're gonna need more interventions as they move up a grade level. So then it becomes that vicious cycle that we start talking about. They miss school, right? They miss instruction, they feel lost, and then now they're anxious and they don't want to go to school, right? And so, next slide, we're talking about secondary, right? So if secondary students are chronically absent, right, frequent absences can be a sign that student is losing interest in school. And as a former assistant principal at a high school level, that's some of the things and patterns that I've seen, right? Then when students lose interest in school, they start to struggle with the schoolwork and have other impacts that can occur, such as bullying or other difficulties. By sixth grade, absenteeism is one of three signs that a student may drop out of high school. And by ninth grade attendance is better, is a better predictor of graduation rates than eighth grade test scores. And that's a testament to what we saw, the local data.
So that's in here for a second, right? A better predictor of graduation than a eighth grade test scores. And so that tells you where, now again, are they not attending because they're not doing, they're not feeling capable, or are they not feeling capable because they're not attending? But either what, it just tells you the urgency with which we are addressing.
So obviously, this is from our presentation last month that Dr. Ben shared. This is our data that we collect. Just as a reminder, our established benchmark last year in terms of average daily attendance, this is one of our data points, measuring that average daily attendance. We've got our benchmarks in the 22, 23 column. We improved a little bit at high school, improved at middle school, and a little bit at kindergarten. So attendance has improved. And that's really helpful for us to, you know, it's a good data point. However, what's important, though, is to really look at a tiered system, though, of, you know, who, everybody gets instruction or support at tier one, but really, how are we identifying, using our data to identify the kids in need? Because if we don't address chronic absenteeism and really identify barriers to attendance, these numbers won't move. And so that's, that's the work. All right. So last year, hopefully this looks familiar. Dr. Jeannie Larburg shared this graphic, and it shows our tiered system of support for behavior. And when you look at the left-hand side, that's the academic side of things. On the right-hand side, this is the behavioral supports. Big picture, when you look at that universal, 100% of our kids receive tier one supports, meaning the proactive setting of expectations, proactive education about why attendance is important. And this goes for all of our MTSSB efforts, but specifically for attendance, we're talking about creating that warm and welcoming environment for every child. The positive communication about attendance and why attendance is important. And then when you look at tier two, this is where you start noticing, are some kids starting to have some concerning attendance patterns, maybe? What's going on? Do we need to do some, some next level or tier two supports for, for small groups of kids? And then by tier three, this is where you get into the more intensive individualized supports. And it might include, you know, the building assessing the needs for individualized and targeted support regarding attendance, and really understanding what the barriers to attendance are. At tier three as well, this is where you do also have your community engagement boards, truancy petitions to the Pierce County Department of Court, but understand that the community engagement board and the truancy petition, that is not the end-all, be-all of tier three. That is just one element at the very, very, very end, because really, we're still trying to address the barriers to attendance at tier three. All right. So before I go into a tier one examples, one of the things that we have, we spent quite a bit of time with our administrators in August at Leadership Team and have, now we meet monthly with our elementary administrator, assistant principals, and our secondary assistant principals. And we really have done a focused, some focused work on really identifying what are the needs and what are the strengths? And so when you look at our tier one examples, these are things that are happening. And we're also gonna share in just a little while, what are the needs as well? Because we've really identified where things are great, things are going well, we're rocking and rolling. However, there's also some needs, because anytime that you analyze really what, how our system is doing, that's where you recognize, wow, we gotta fix some things, or we need to prioritize some things. But when we took a look at tier one examples of what everyone receives for attendance, we're talking about developing that welcoming school environment. I love this picture because this is our greetings at the door. So when you look at connecting to that caring adult, every child, especially your kids who don't feel connected to school, maybe yet, even something as simple as our greetings at the door is so important, developing that welcoming environment. We're talking about positive communication. Research shows, and our parents are appreciating this, the importance of good school attendance communication, educating our parents as to why really strong attendance is important. And I don't know if you've noticed, but in our newsletters, school newsletters, as well as district newsletters, we've really had a strong attendance awareness communication plan for the year. And every month, you're gonna see something about attendance. In fact, you might see things twice a month for that. We're also making sure that adults and kids and families understand the impact of good and poor attendance, that, that we understand, how does it help you, and what can it do if you're not there on a regular basis? We're also talking about planning celebrations related to attendance. One of the things you have to be cautious about is not necessarily celebrating perfect attendance. There was kind of a discussion before the meeting. One of the things that we really need to celebrate is improved attendance, because we want things to improve. And so how are we recognizing kids when they have improved attendance, as well as good attendance? Communicating with families when students are absent, making sure parents know that, hey, we noticed, what can we do to help your, your child? And then every child and their family is encouraged to develop a success plan that includes good attendance. And so really talking about it as a family, and encouraging that good attendance. So that's tier one. That's what's happening universally for all kids. So when we talk about tier two, there's a, there's a reason why we chose this particular picture. When you look at that analogy of the iceberg, when you think about that iceberg, you know, there's quite a bit that we can see on top of the water, but really, look at how much there is below the surface. And so at tier two, this is where you're starting to understand what's below the surface, what are the needs that maybe we need to start addressing? And so at tier two, we're talking about identifying those barriers to good attendance. What's getting in the way of good attendance? We are looking at student success plans being developed so that we can correct course on attendance. We're talking about positive reinforcements and incentives for kids to be at school. We're talking about family visits, conferences, and engagement. I'll be a part of a meeting next week with a family, in fact, to really, to support a family at student conferences. We're talking about mentors and tutoring. There's check-in and check-out systems with individual kids who need that a little bit more personalized care and personalized touch. We've got small group interventions and supports where kids are learning about why attendance is important. We're talking about restorative alternatives to discipline and suspension, because we have to remember suspension is a part of chronic absenteeism. And if we're having a lot of suspensions, if a particular student has a lot of suspensions, we need to figure out how can we turn that corner, so that they remain in school or able to be in school. We're also talking about parenting supports, for example, the Love and Logic class, because sometimes parents, they need some help, they need some support in terms of parenting and setting expectations within their own home, or setting routines and so forth. And then we're also talking about consistent monitoring of attendance and data tracking, so that we know who needs the support, so that we catch kids just in time. And so then we have tier three. This is where we're talking about kids with significant attendance concerns. So again, we are identifying those barriers to good attendance. This is where we really are trying to now understand what are the needs. And we have multiple ways that we can refer kids to supports, because at this point, if you're talking about, you know, missing definitely more than that 10%, you're maybe missing, you know, 20% of school. You're really at risk. How can we refer to WISE, the wraparound services for, for family supports? Are there mental health supports that are needed? Maybe there's, you know, drug addiction, alcohol addiction supports that maybe a child needs. We're talking drug and alcohol referrals, 504 referral, maybe a referral for special education, because maybe there are some significant learning concerns that, that, that our student needs more, more support. Possibly McKinney-Vento, housing stability supports, because oftentimes, it's hard to focus on being at school or be at school when you're trying to figure out, you know, where am I going home to, or what food? I mean, you can speak to this a lot, because you work with Andy. It just food supports, making sure they've got the nutrition at home. We also are so blessed to have our family center, support for basic needs. When you look at what our family center provides for families, oftentimes, they are involved as well, supporting, supporting kids. We're talking about a functional behavior assessment, trying to understand what's the function of the behavior. In other words, what's the reason for the behavior? Because sometimes we need to understand, is this a control issue? And so an FBA might be helpful. Sometimes at the high school level, we need flexible schooling options as well. Sometimes the traditional school setting doesn't meet the need of a child. And so how can we utilize options like Ratt Alliance, Open Doors, our skills center over, you know, just off of Canyon is a great opportunity as well. And so really looking at, what does this child need educationally? Lastly, consistent monitoring of attendance, data tracking, again, making sure we know what's going on and are figuring out where, where kids are at. And then lastly, there is the legal component of community engagement boards and the required steps regarding a truancy petition as a last resort, because really, the courts support this, and we support this. We want to find the answers before we ever try to take it, before we take a child or a family to court. Really, we're trying to solve the problem. And that's, that's what the court expects, that's what OSPI expects, it's what we expect. So, so there you go. That was a lot of information in terms of peers, right? So let's go into what's working well. And again, this is what our administrators have identified. And so when you look at tier one, we've got the common language for monthly newsletters for the schools and for the district, so that we're educating our families about why strong attendance is so important. We're teaching kids and staff the, the importance of good attendance. When kids, we also need to teach when to keep kids home due to illness, because that's a tricky one. Think about where we've been the last few years. And so making sure that we're using Department of Health, you'll see that little graphic there. When is your child too sick to go to school? And when should you be sending your child back to school? Because we had different messages three to four years ago, right? And so now it's the, you know, going back to the, if they've got a fever, they're vomiting, and so forth. We also have our greetings at the door, plus one more, really building relationships with kids. Student recognition for improved attendance. And we have our CEE data regarding school climate that is showing that we have, we have good data regarding that. However, we can always improve, because we want to make sure kids feel safe and welcome. We have our translated letters and documents at tier one as well, when we look at our, our supports. So tier two, we have our building teams, they're in place. We are using the barriers to attendance assessment for students and parents and guardians. And you're actually gonna see that barriers to us, to attendance assessment in just a little while here. That's gonna be kind of our ending activity. We're talking about involving counselors and parents and problem solving, really reaching out to our families and working on solutions together. We've got bi-monthly team meetings to review attendance and intervene as needed. And again, we've got attendance data, data tracking systems in place. Tier three, what's working well? Our truancy procedures are working, our letters, our timelines, they're all consistent. Barriers to attendance, again, helping to identify needs and solutions. We do have our building attendance teams, and we have our We do have our building attendance teams and we have our common tools. We have our community engagement board that has met already five times this year. We've had five families that we've met with. To really support, right, and find solutions. And again, our attendance data tracking system. As well, we have really focused on systems, our attendance drive. We are trying to put everything on our staff dashboard. So that it's easily accessible, so that whoever the staff member is working with a family, they have easy access to whatever document that they need. And so that includes the common documents, letters, common communications across building and the district. And then our elementary and secondary attendance meetings, we're meeting regularly on a monthly basis. So there's always those opportunities for improvement. So again, I, we added the new attendance resource page on staff dashboard because it's still growing. It has quite a bit of information already on it. But we're wanting to make it really usable for everyone. And so we're we're continuing to grow the attendance page. As well, easily accessible data, we're still learning what Home Room Connect can offer. And, and so that's our data system that we moved to this year. So right now, it's it's a lot of number crunching out of Skyward. And so we're learning more about what Home Room Connect can offer in that area. We also want to come to our data, following up on students who are not attending. Because technically at 20 days, we can withdraw a student. However, we're really working hard not to withdraw kids. We're trying to figure out. They haven't been at school. Why are you not in school? How do we get you reconnected? Rather than just following an old procedure of, well, they haven't been here, we need to withdraw them. That impacts our graduation rates, but it bigger picture. Where is that student? Are they safe? Are they okay? What resources do they need? How do we get them reconnected to the school setting? Is really important. So we're working on that, but we recognize that change in system that that needed to happen. We've, we're making that change. However, again, following up with those students. This is an interesting one, quicker interventions for new students, trying to understand, is there a petition from an old school? Are there attendance concerns? And then how can we immediately provide interventions for those kids so that they're not flipping through the crack as a new student? At tier two, we're talking about what what do tier two interventions look like? And really defining teacher and staff roles, building capacity of teacher and staff. And then the, we're building an intervention menu tied to the barriers to attendance. And I just last week met with elementary assistant principals and they did a phenomenal job of really putting together a very robust. Menu, because oftentimes you need ideas. Kid has, a student has this concern, okay, we have these three options. And what's great is they've got this menu rather than trying to figure out what do I do next? And so that menu is really helpful. Tier three, again, that intervention menu tied to the barriers to attendance. And then that alignment across buildings and grade bands in in terms of the supports that are provided. So those are those opportunities for improvement. So at this point, I've been talking a lot. You could pass those around, David, here, I'll. I want to have you go through a brief activity. They're all the same, yeah. All right. And Kevin, I know you're there. This was emailed to you from Charmaine right before the meeting, so you've got access to it as well. You take the whole thing.
Got it up on front of me on the screen.
There you go. Two pages, yep. All right. So the first page, it says assessment of barriers to attendance. This is the assessment that we would use with a student. To just start the discussion of what's going on, you know. Maybe we don't know enough about the student. So if you take a look, we're asking questions about school, we're asking questions about home. On the back, we're asking questions maybe about health. That we need to know more about, what can we do basically to identify what are some areas that we might provide support? The second piece of paper is the barriers to assessment. It's for the parent or the guardian to complete as well, because oftentimes our parents, they need partners. And so how can we partner with them? So this is what I'd like you to do. I'd like you to spend maybe thirty seconds to a minute. We're going to do a noticing and wonderings. As you just glance or scan through this. What do you notice about the assessment of barriers to attendance? And then what do you wonder about? And again, the purpose of this is to start that discussion between school and families and kiddo. About what are the needs? But why don't you take thirty seconds to a minute? What do you notice? What do you wonder about? And then we'll engage in a brief discussion. Right. I just want to open it up to, what do you notice first? Or maybe it's a wondering, either one. You're noticing some wonderings.
So there's a lot of redundancy between some of the questions. They're phrased in different ways, but they give the same information. So that. You guys could see, how does the parent see the child? How's the child see themselves? Does the parent know who the child's friends are? Just a simple thing like that, you can probably ascertain. He's, once the kid gets home, maybe they don't even talk to the parent. That's why the parent doesn't know if the kid even has friends. I had a question though, how is this part of the community engagement piece?
It's completed prior. It's completed prior because really we want our schools to. Try and problem solve at the lowest level. And that's why you started it here too. You can use it at tier two, you can use it at tier three. It is a requirement though for a truancy petition. We are required, but we want to try and get at the lowest level possible.
And it's just delivered to the students home to the parent by a staff member or?
It's completed with the student or completed with the parent. Sometimes this is sent to the parent as well. But really this is barriers to attendance for the student part, we want to do it with the student so that the staff member can engage with the student and ask follow up questions. Yeah. And I failed to mention, by the way, OSPI gives us options as to which barriers to assessment. Barriers to attendance assessment that we use. This is the Peninsula School District, one that is approved by OSPI. And so that's, that's what we use. So what else? Noticeings and wonderings?
I guess I wonder, I think it's a great, I think it's great. And I think it's great that it's assessed both by the student. I mean, one of the things that I noticed when we all, you asked all of us from the very beginning. We were all clearly driven by home, right? Every one of us said, you know, that was one of our factors. So we don't, that's a super important thing to do it. So I'm so glad that parents are included in it. I guess that my first wondering as I was going through this and the student one is how honest they are.
I think they tend to be pretty honest. Oftentimes it's a counselor, it's a staff member that the student knows that engages in this conversation. And so, and that's one of the thought. I guess the hallmarks of tier two is, once again, who does this kid have a connection with, right? Now, it says something if we can't figure out what adult has a connection with the kid, that that says something else as well. But really you want to work hard and that's why oftentimes it might be a B F S S, it might be a school counselor, it might be a trusted adult, it might be an assistant principal. But really trying to get it, who is doing this with the child to really get that. Because if you think about it, look at some of the information you're going to be receiving, it can be pretty sensitive. We also need to have people who are knowledgeable about how to access resources. And so if there is a referral to the Wise team, for example, or a referral to the family center, we need, we need to make sure that the people who are. Working with the student know what the resources are and know how to access them. Yeah, good question. Thank you.
Do you have sometimes parents that just don't fill this out, don't have a need to fill it out, it's too probing? And it tells you right there where. One of the main problems is.
Yeah, yeah.
But I would imagine a lot of parents do fill it out and and they want to.
A lot of parents do.
They want to engage with the schools and improve the attendance.
Yeah, yeah.
Need to be the staff member that had to go or brought this off to a parent that had no desire to fill it out. That's got to be a tough exchange.
And that's where, again, the parent one's not required. Student one at secondary and at middle school, we do need to, you know, submit it with the truancy petition if that's where we go. Sometimes it's asking the questions without a piece of paper even. You know, it's it's how do we engage in that conversation to to assess? Because again, you don't want it to be so off putting that it breaks relationship, right? Really, the whole point is how do we problem solve? How do we just? Figure out what's going on and how can we we work together to to solve the problem, meet your needs so that you're in school.
Kind of how I looked at this, it was more of that building that connection, right? When you have a connection to something or someone more apt to engage.
Yeah.
And hopefully that would be true with attendance issues. If you can sit and kind of digest some of this together. You're building connections, hopefully, maybe in more of an authentic way, that this is the start.
Yes.
And just being seen, you know, and valued for some of these and problem solving, it goes a long way when you're trying to build those connections. So. I look at it as a positive. Positive opportunity for both students and parents to give feedback and problem solve together. I also noticed that they're under the school parent one, there are just some really good connections, the third goal of making sure that every student has a staff member.
Yep.
Or someone else will.
Yep.
Yeah, so blame.
Have one, well, first, I love the whole future jobs piece. Yeah. Connection. But how would we know if they're hungry?
If I tell you.
Say that again.
If they're five, they'll tell.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, yeah, yeah. You made me think of something when the slide talked about food insecurity or food. Just food. And I just wonder like, how how do we know based on this if they need help with food?
Well, I think I appreciate that question, you know, I know from my experience with building. That's where having that adult cross connection with them. I found that often my lunchtime supervisor.
Yes, yeah.
Really can give a really good indication. They watch the kid going to the website, taking food and putting it in their bag.
Yeah.
Why are you putting your food in your bag? Save this for later.
Right.
Right? And then that helps. Help them clue in, like perhaps there's some food insecurity. So it really is that team approach, having people look out for that kid. Kids are, kids do tell us, right? I mean, my middle school kids, they would say. You know, do you have any food? The things about that age that would then tip us off. But sometimes they don't tell us.
Maybe high school kids, would they be more, I mean, I never, I'm not a high school person, you all know this, but.
I'll tell you.
They, some will. I think, you know, to me, all my years of education, attendance is like. The one thing we kept a butterfly net and kept trying to catch. And. It's interesting when you really dig down. I mean, when you, when you talk to the kids and you're trying to make the impact, you've got your. Certificated staff and they do a wonderful job and and have worked their tails off for years. You've got classified staff. You've got some kids who will come because they're connected with the custodian.
Yep.
And sometimes we don't remember to go ask those people. I don't rant very often, but one of my rants is when the state decided twenty four credits in a six period day. You don't have kids that it's easy to catch up. You don't have classes such as a ninth grade class of how to come into school. I have ninth graders who will tell you they graduated because older kids connected with them were driving into school. I had one young lady who hated school, but her friend in that class who was the senior advisor. Would drive to her house every day and grab her and pull her out of school until the end of ninth grade, she was doing well finally.
Yeah.
There. With that, with that twenty four credit in a six period day. I mean, if you think about it, if you're not a very strong individual, you flunked one or two classes, it doesn't take much to figure out, I'm not going to graduate. And so even though we've got tons of things, you're talking about the adolescent mind of what happens when I get there and I'm behind. And I will tell you that I learned seriously to use every para educator, connect to the kid, every custodian. Every nurse, I mean, and sometimes it was as simple as. The student would get what they needed to from their classroom teacher and they'd go sit down with the custodian. Because they connected and they would do their homework. They would never do it in class, but they would do it with them.
Yeah.
So it really is how do you develop that? And I know this district works so hard on. Community and classified certificate and that, but it's it's that constantly remembering there's every little niche that you're trying to find. To make that connection, help them feel like they can't be successful. I didn't mention earlier, I went to school every day, including sick and fortunate, because my home life was so horrible that it was. Better to be there than to face the consequences of what could come of that day. And we have some kids who don't have that, but so what they do is they escape.
Yep.
They they head off to school, but they never make it.
Yeah.
So how do we find those? And and once again, we're doing tremendous things. It's just. Keep remembering all those little bits and pieces.
Yeah.
And I think that's a really the important thing. This is a great example where the sum of the small things makes the big difference. The small things are the big things. The number one tier one strategy for improving attendance. Is noticing when a kid is gone and making a positive statement when they return.
Yep.
Erin, I missed you yesterday. I'm so. Right? Leave the sarcasm aside, right? Don't say, oh, hey, keeper, join us, your grace. Which sometimes we feel. Right? But it's those simple, small things. And I want to just. Dig a little bit on the, one of the things you said, dig deeper, it says, so I saw such a powerful example when I was at one of our elementary school back to school nights. The whole team was there. And we had one of our nutrition staff there at one of our elementary schools and this little girl comes running. And she says, it's my lunch lady, right? I ran up and gave her a big hug and but that's one of the people she connected with. You know, that's my lunch lady, you know, mom, this is my lunch lady. And that was just another person that she connected with. Which, one of the things that I appreciate when we're looking to the school team, it's who's connected with that student? Across the school. And making sure that we're thinking of all the staff. Coaches, club advisors, right, classified, certificate, all of them.
Yeah.
I had a man who we had to check in and check out for various reasons. He had like three months of grade and and I brought him in and we had a little ceremony, he graduated. He goes, no, I gotta do it every day. This is how I make sure I get here. And it was was like two minutes. He just came to my door and said, I'm here. Okay, at the end of the day, I made it through the day and and. It's it's so difficult because. Each child is so different. There is no one fix. I can fix a chemistry class on how to balance an equation. I can't fix as a student because there's so many, you know, intricate, intricate things in it. But I know the district knocks themselves out. I know everyone does so much. It's just. Continuing to fight through it. And I think after COVID, I, we were just talking about this with my son because. You started, you know, we still see where somebody has a sniffle, so they got to stay home for five days. Well, no, the doctor really says it's a sniffle and you can come back tomorrow, but you're, you know, we've got the five day.
Well, they said I have to stay home.
Five days. Well, to to your point about that, and everybody may know that better than I, but. So when you talk about someone like the lunch lady or or the, you know, the janitor or something, are are we. Bringing them into the discussion of how we're focusing on attendance and how they, we value their participation in that?
It's a bit of a challenge, at least I'm going to look at my colleagues who've been in high schools before secondary is you have them all for a day. Maybe a day and a half in August. And then you really don't have access to those people because of contractual and other things, but what you try to do is you try to go. And have contact with them at different times and, you know, and we talk, who? Who, who is, I think I have one young man. You might have a special education student. If if you said, well, you're behind today, so you can't go down and help the custodian get ready for fifth period. That was the end of the day, he was gone, jumping fences, we're. That was the end of the day. He was gone, jumping fences, we're chasing him. And, but you learn those things, you learn to make those contacts and and that, but it's, it's a challenge. What do you guys say?
Yeah, I think I would agree with that. I think that something could do better is tapping the whole staff. But do you think that's something we see in our buildings that they are doing, especially on a case-by-case basis? When you ask that question of who do you connect to? Sometimes those answers surprise us.
But yeah, if we can empower those, I mean, because teachers are obvious, the counselors are obvious, but empowering some of the ancillary folks that. Are probably connecting with some of our also. More ancillary students, right? Like non-traditional. And just let them, empower them, let them know how important their, their piece can be for those students, the stories like that. I mean, maybe you don't.
And I want to say, you guys. Park and you're doing so much and it's grown from year to year of of support and that and. I've thought everything everyone's doing. I know there's a lot of people not at the table tonight that are doing so much that.
Our schools, our schools are just doing amazing things. They really are. Yeah, thanks.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you mind chiming in for a second? It sounds like everybody covered pretty much every wondering I had. But the only wondering I had after listening to everybody talk was. How is this form distributed for filling out? Is it, is it only on paper or is it distributed electronically?
We have it, Kevin, we've got it both electronic and paper form. And again, we really try to have an adult complete the form with the student. Yeah, because we want to, we really want to engage in the discussion. That's really, you know, it's not like an assignment that we send home. So we really want to engage with the student and with the family in the discussion because, you know, that's where you can. Can ask further questions and probe deeper and and really identify, you know, what are the needs? So, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Okay. All right, thanks. We have a first reading for core policies on our agenda this evening. Forty-one thirty, sixty-two twenty, sixty-nine fifty and. Sixty-nine twenty-five, as well as three of the corresponding procedures for information for tonight. We'll vote on the next agenda. Anything for board discussion? Kevin?
No, nothing for me. Thank you.